I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start this with the comments from the press and public. Anyone like to testify? Please come on up. You may either stand there or sit down, whatever your comfort level is.
Patricia Merchant, 118 Babuza Lake Road, Merrimack. I'm here because I'm concerned about an event that happened with the safety, I feel the safety, and the security of our children on voting day. When I went in on that day, two of the cafeteria doors were open. I'm under the impression, as a school district employee, that we are in a secure building for a reason. Parents come in, they have, as visitors, they sign in. I'm an employee, I have my badge, I come in. So on voting day, I was quite alarmed when I saw two of the cafeteria doors open. I approached the assistant principal, and shortly thereafter, both doors were closed. However, in the course of my duties, I wander between the elementary school and the upper L. And I was quite alarmed to come over around 11 o'clock to find one of the doors opened again. I was a little frustrated, and I called the superintendent's office. About forty minutes later, that poor woman got another phone call. About an hour and a half later, when I left for the day, the door was still ajar, well, actually, it was tied open to the dumpster. I'm very concerned, because yes, there were police officers outside and within the school building. However, the police officer that was outside was facing Babuza Lake Road, and wouldn't have seen anybody had they chosen to go in that side door. I'm also concerned, because as a school district employee, I have been fingerprinted and background-checked before I'm allowed to interact with the children and things. The children on voting day are served lunch down in the far reaches of the school building. I understand this is supposed to protect the children from mingling with the public. My concern is that the people that do the checklist are allowed to wander down to that region to purchase lunch. I realize they get hungry. But if we're supposed to be having a secure building, I feel like there should be some checks and balances. Also, if they're trying to keep the children separated from the public, you have the kids coming in the same door and exiting as when the public is coming in and voting. My other concern with the door being open and being tied to the dumpster is health reasons and safety. There's bees out there. We have a number of kids and adults that are allergic to bees. I would hate to think that a bee was able to enter, and some child gets stung and have to use the EpiPen. I just feel for the safety and the security of our students that maybe we should rethink about having schools open on voting day and/or have a different polling place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to testify? Okay, I'd like to start out with introductions. We all know each other, but not everybody does. Chris, would you like to start?
Sure. I'm Chris Ortega, the chairman of the school board. To my right is vice chair Shannon Barnes. To her right is superintendent Marge Chaffery. To her right is assistant superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin. And to his immediate right is business administrator Matt Chevanel. And then the board members at the table across from us are, starting from my left to right, Mr. Davis Powell, Mr. Andy Schneider, and Ms. Cynda Gualyumi.
Well, you did such a great job, I hope I can do the same. To my, I'm chair Nancy Harrington. To my left is vice chair Tom Mahan. Next to him is Paul McCauley, the assistant town manager. The town manager, Eileen Cabanout, was excused this evening, she could not be here. Starting from left to right, counselor Bill Boyd. Say hello, Bill. Counselor Lon Woods, counselor Finley Rothaus, counselor Tom Koenig, and counselor Dan Dwyer. Okay, might as well get right started here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is Merrimack Safeguard update. Could we please have Deborah Wolfline? Lean, right? Wolfline, I said it right the first time. Betsy Hood, an office apprentice. And this is going to be an update on the grant funding received by the Merrimack Middle School Resource Officer, an overall review of the Merrimack Safeguard program. And I hear we have good news, but I'll let you say it.
Well, thank you. I'm Detective Tom Prines. I'm also the school resource officer at the Merrimack Middle School and the grant coordinator. To my immediate right is Betsy Hood. She's the director of the-
Someone doesn't have their, there you go.
The youth council-
Thank you.
-for Nashua. And then my far right is Debbie Wolfline, who's the principal of Merrimack Middle School and part of Merrimack Safeguard. So it's unbelievable that I'm back five years later, and we also got awarded another five years on the grant. It seems just, the other day, we were here trying to decide what we were going to do with the first five years. Now we're here for the second. Tonight, I'm just gonna, I know there's new members on the school board and on the town council, so I'm just gonna give you a quick review where we came from. And then Betsy's gonna take over and talk about where we're at. And then Debbie's gonna finish up where we're headed. But first, I'd like to thank the two ladies to my right, because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them. And Merrimack's pretty lucky to have both of them. The reason is that Debbie Wolfline's the one that found the grant and then applied. If I remember correctly, it was like a week before the deadline. And she locked herself in an undisclosed location and got that grant out and got Merrimack five years each year, $125,000. We could go for another second five, so we found Betsy. And we thought that was a little easy for Betsy, so the federal government made it, so you had to get more points to score on the grant to get it this time with less funding. And each time, it's a competitive grant throughout the country. And she got the grant for another five years for $125,000. So I thank them, and Merrimack should be thankful that they're working for, for Merrimack. So the grant is a DFC grant, it's a drug-free community grant, comes under the White House office. As I said before, it's five years, $125,000. When we first got it five years ago, we had to start a coalition for substance. Already going was the Drug Advisory Council, part of the school district that handled Title IV money, which dried up, but they also had, what we needed was 12 sectors of the community represented. And so like the police department, school, media, and so on. They were already in the Drug Advisory, so Merrimack Safeguard came the Drug Advisory. We took over that group, and we're now the Merrimack Safeguard. Our next step was, once we had the 12 sectors, was we had to start on a logic model. Basically, why, what in Merrimack, what was the problem in Merrimack? And everything with the grant has to be evidence-based. And we used three surveys. The first one is the YRBS, which is Youth Risk Behavioral Survey. And that's at the high school, and it hits all four grades there every other year. You get a survey from all the students. Second one was the NOMS, National Outcome Measured Survey, which we use at the middle school. And that's every year. And then the last two years, we came up with our own parent survey, that we surveyed the parents. So based on that and our logic model, the two substances that we picked was alcohol and prescription drugs. So once we got going, and we got our action plan, and started moving a little bit, our last five years, we basically were building and strengthening the community relations between organizations in town and outside of town. So I'll just give you a couple of things that we've been doing for each substance. So for alcohol, the first thing we did, we teamed up with New Hampshire Liquor Enforcement, and they had the Buyer Beware Program, which basically has signage in all the stores, tightly, you know, the warning about not selling to underage kids. Also, the host law for partying underage. So we, all the stores in Merrimack up and going with that program. Second, we went with Belavent's Beverages, which is a distributor out of Nashua. And they've been really key, they, all the underage 21 signs you see in all the stores, on the beer coolers, on the wall, they supply that. And if we need it, they're just a call away. They also do the buying calendar that you usually see behind the register, saying what date you'll be 21. They supply all that at no cost. They also provide speakers to the high school and middle school on people that have had issues either with drugs or alcohol. And we usually get those in the spring. The last thing that we did with the alcohol was an environmental scan. What that is, is that we had an intern from Riviera College come up, and all 43 liquor licensees in town, they, this person went to. And what they did is they did kind of a survey inside of where all the signs were located, where the beer was, was the beer in one cooler, was it mixed with Gatorade and a kid's drink? They also checked out, pointed sales up at the register, what kind of signs they had in there. And we, I think we had two very minor, some signs that were either in the wrong location or you couldn't see it. But other than that, all the licensees passed with flying colors, which we're really happy to hear about. With the prescription drugs, the big thing that we started with is the lock boxes for prescription drugs. Any event we did, we'd either display them, or we'd raffle them off, where you can store in a box, locked up, and usually mounted inside a drawer to a wall. But we could see that we had taken another step, so we paired up with the DEA with the drug takeback. We just had one this last weekend. We hold them every fall and spring. In this past one, we took in 71 pounds of prescription drugs. Which seems like a high number, but we normally were getting around 200 to 150 pounds, the fall and spring each. I think it's a sign showing that what we're doing is working, because the weights are coming down. We also worked with Beyond Influence and United Way to get a drug permanent box inside the police station, it's right to the left of the dispatch window. And with that box even there, we weekly empty it, and we're about 8.6 pounds a week that we take out of it, and all the medicine gets destroyed. To date, we're up over 1,400 pounds of prescription drugs that we've taken in the last five years and have destroyed. So we're really happy about the results we're getting on that. And the last one is the youth council that we use. They have a program for court diversion, so if a juvenile gets arrested for the first time, they don't have to go through the juvenile justice system. They can go to the youth council, and they get assessment, education, and treatment through that program. It only works on the first offense, second offense, it's not offered. And we also, through the youth council, have put a counselor in the middle school that comes in and works with the kids. That's also part of the grant. So that kind of brings you up to year six. And I'll give it to Betsy to while you with year six.
Thank you, Tom. I'm really a numbers person, and so some of the best ways, I think, that we can really share with you some of the incredible things that have happened is to, to give you a couple of data points. One of my favorite, as Tom had referenced, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. It's a survey that's done every other year, so it was done both in 2009, 11, 13. And in 2009, we looked at the data for ninth and 10th graders who said that they had their first drink of alcohol before they were age 13. Okay, so 17.1% of our ninth and 10th graders had been drinking more than just a couple of sips of alcohol, like at a religious gathering, before they turned 13. You fast forward four years later, that 17.1% is down to 10.2% of ninth and 10th graders. And so our evaluator said that is absolutely statistically significant and can really be attributed to the fact that we've had Detective Prentice in the school and really promoting safe choices, you know, making a positive difference and staying healthy. So that was incredibly important. And I really think that was the basis for why we got money for the next five years, because we really can prove with solid data that what we're doing has been effective. Some of what we've talked about, though, is there are also some numbers that concern us going forward. And that was part of the reason why we wound up implementing the parent survey, because the seventh and eighth graders were telling us that their parents haven't really talked to them much about being safe from alcohol or other drugs. And so we're like, you know, we really talked among the coalition and said, "We need to actually ask the parents if they've had a good conversation with their young people about making safe choices." And while over 96% of the parents have been thinking that they're making, you know, having those conversations with their kids, the kids just aren't hearing them, because it was only about 40% of the kids who actually recall the conversation that they'd had. So some of what we want to do going forward is really help better facilitate communication between parents and their young people, and really talk about being responsible overall. Many times, driving throughout the community or watching TV, we hear about, you know, "Drink responsibly, make responsible choices, be responsible on the playground." And we got to talking as a coalition, what does it actually mean to be responsible? And we all agreed, we want people to be responsible on our roads, you know, in our stores, at people's home gatherings, and things along those lines. So what we have proposed for the next five years is to launch a large-scale Be Responsible Merrimack campaign, where we would engage each of the 12 sectors that Tom had started to reference. And that includes the business community, and faith leaders, and parents, and youth, and government officials, to really identify among each sector, what does it mean for you as a businessperson to be responsible? 20% of our young people in the most recent YRBS said they've driven in a car with someone who's been drinking. You know, one might assume that that's a peer, but that could also be a parent, because they've been out to dinner, and the mom or dad had a couple glasses of wine. And based on their size and body type, is that being responsible? Or did they maybe have it a little too fast or a little too much? And so how can we, as a community, really make sure that people are making great decisions? So the natural partners that we've talked about working with going forward include doing even more with school nurses and guidance counselors from the K to 12 range, talking with different neighborhood groups to connect with Merrimack friends and families. So as people are moving into town, do they know that we have a lockbox? Do they know that Merrimack has a social host law? One of the data points we also learned is of the 122 middle school parents that were surveyed, 27.7% said that they would allow some drinking or that they're, they've hosted parties where alcohol was available or even served to underage youth. So 27.7% of families had done that. And over 91% of them realized that there's a social host law where they could actually be arrested for having hosted that party. So there's also a disconnect around people being responsible and really making good choices. So we're excited to be able to move into that next phase and really broaden our scope and get the community really excited.
Great, Debbie?
Thank you, Betsy. So my part is really to pick up where Betsy left off and what Tom had to say this evening, and talk about how we plan to build that broad base of support. I think you heard that we've really worked hard to gather up some data that would help us to uncover some what we call root causes in the community. Why is there a substance abuse problem, and what can we do about it? One of the requirements of having one of these grants from the government is that we had to have an outside evaluator who was objective, who would look at all of our data and help us to understand where we were effective and what else we could do. And so we partnered with the Community Health Institute. They were very helpful to us. They were objective, they know about substance abuse issues. And they were the ones, Betsy referenced this, who pointed out that Detective Prentice has had a role, and we can always, already see results. In fact, they described Tom Prentice as being an agent of environmental change, which is pretty exciting to us. And when we wrote the new grant application, we put him right at the center as that force that's going to make some change in the community. The evaluators talked about, the goal of having Detective Prentice at the middle school is to promote positive school climate and help students make positive choices. And the evaluators pointed out many places in our data that show Tom is having an impact. Not only in the middle school, because he also does work in the elementary schools and throughout the community. There are some evenings when Tom is at home with students and their families, talking to them about positive choices. Another exciting piece is that Julie DeLuca, who is assistant principal at Thornton's Ferry, has become a very active member of our board. In fact, she went with Betsy to Washington and helped to shape the grant. Betsy referenced some really nice pieces about the elementary students and parents and nurses. And I think that having Julie DeLuca be part of this is really going to be helpful. So the data sources really helped us identify some problem areas. And we are now going to try to look at those and see how we can get more people involved to help us. You heard about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And that is done every other year with the New Hampshire Department of Education Support. And also, Dr. Jeff Metzger, he is the New Hampshire State Epidemiologist. He looks at the Youth Risk Behavior Survey results. He makes a report, and he shares that with the high school principal, who allows us to look at that information and use it. And it was very helpful in writing this grant. You heard from Tom Prentice about what we call the NOMS. Another name for that is the Adapted Youth and Young Adult Survey. And that information has been really helpful. Betsy mentioned how we were able to tell that there was a need for us to find out where parents were at. And I love the point that Betsy mentioned, where we saw that parents feel they are very clear on their guidelines on substance abuse use, but the children are either not having those conversations, or, as Betsy said, not remembering them. That's something Merrimack Safeguard can do for sure. So we've been able to link various data points. And that is where we will be getting that help from other members of the community. We made a compelling case through our grant application, and therefore got those next five years of funding. And we were told that would be very difficult, so we're pretty pleased with that. And we think the community of Merrimack should be very proud. One of the pieces that I'd like to talk to you about is that we had to prove that we are using what are called seven strategies for community change in our grant application. Seven proven strategies for community change. And I'm going to leave a handout for you, so you can look at that afterwards and see what they are. But I thought you might be interested in what those strategies are. And if you could think about what you heard from Betsy as well as Tom. Moving forward, you'll see that we continue to use these seven strategies. They're very simple, but very effective. Provide information. Enhance skills. Provide support. Enhance access. Reduce barriers. And that would be to support and help that families and children need. Change consequences. You heard about the Court Diversion Program, there's an example. Change physical design. Some communities need to look at their areas where children are gathering and maybe make some changes to make it less likely that children will engage in risky behavior. And the last one is modify or change policies. So those are the seven strategies for community change. We'll be using those, we'll be drawing in more support. And I want to emphasize that we receive this funding now for the second time, not only because there is a need in the community of Merrimack, an identified need, but also because we could demonstrate the ongoing commitment of our community to offer resources and support and energy and creativity that would help make this problem better. Each year, in order to keep the grant, and in order to get it in the first place, we have to demonstrate the community of Merrimack gives just as much funding, resources, and energy as the government is providing us. Each year, we have no problem at all making a case and showing the many ways that the community of Merrimack really provides resources to help with this issue. And that's why, I think, why we really got the grant. So we're proud, we're pleased, we're excited about this. We look forward to working with all of you, because this truly will become a very flexible, community-based mechanism. We need everyone's help, because we really want to get this up and running and go on for a long, long time. And we think it will make a huge difference, and that we really will safeguard our community in Merrimack. So we thank all of you, because if it weren't for all of you, we don't think we would have gotten this grant. Thank you. And we'll try to answer any questions that you have, too.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, congratulations. You have every reason to be proud. And my only thought, and I won't speak on, because other people may have comments, but in my own opinion is, this is just one variable as to why Merrimack was chosen to be the safest community in New Hampshire. It's just one. So you should all be proud. Anyone else would like to make a comment, or? Bill Boyd, and then Shannon?
Thank you, ma'am chair, appreciate it. And congratulations again to the Merrimack Safeguard for the grant award. Just a curiosity question, I took the opportunity to look at the link. That was on the Office of White House Drug Control site. And there were four different hyperlinks, and Merrimack was listed under the hyperlink for year six, but they were not listed under the hyperlink for years seven through 10. And I'm wondering, once we complete the sixth year, do we automatically get down to that other hyperlink, which has seven through 10? Because I didn't see, I was told that the letter had not been, it had been confirmed, but we didn't get a confirmatory letter.
Right, and I believe the confirmation letter has absolutely arrived. The reason we weren't listed under seven to 10 is each year, they announce it individually. But because year six was a competitive year, that's why it was such a big deal to be refunded. So year one and year six are competitive. Years two to five and seven to 10 are automatically provided as long as we're meeting the goals that we've included in our action plan. So it is a five-year grant.
Okay, and follow-up to that question. The criteria that you have to meet, obviously, it's something quantitative that you submit directly to the White House or whoever their proxy is that administrates the program. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The second question, if I could, regarding the Risk Behavioral Survey. What kinds, what kinds of questions are asked on the survey as it relates to behaviors that you're targeting, as it relates to drug and alcohols? Are kids allowed to self-identify on the survey, or is it strictly an anonymous survey?
Nope, it's strictly an anonymous survey. And the core questions that we need to report the data on are really around 30-day use, whether the young people we're surveying have used alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, or prescription drugs within the last 30 days. And they ask questions about your parents' perception of wrongness and their peers' perception of wrongness, and how harmful they think it is. So one of the concerns that we definitely have is with the prevalence of more marijuana use nationally, is that the perceived harm is going down. Kids don't think it's as harmful as they used to think. So those are some of the other concerns that come up, you know, in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
Two more? Quick. Thank you. Has the 2014 survey been administered, or is it staggered through specific years?
It's on odd years, and so the 2015 survey would be conducted sometime around April, and then we get the results around December.
And nobody can do, can refute or dispute the presence and value that Detective Prentice has had in the middle school? But that being said, was there any other key factor that contributed to the trend downward from 17 to 10% that would come to mind?
I think it's, of course, I really appreciate Detective Prentice being in the building, but I think it's a lot more than that. I agree, that's a good point to raise. I think that the community effort and the initiative and the awareness has really made a difference. Lot more conversation about these issues, that's what I would say.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am chair.
Shannon Barnes?
Thank you. I was really looking at, you know, fantastic work, and I did enjoy my time as a school board liaison to that committee. It's enlightening, as a parent, as a school board member, what, you know, the life of a student is really like when your kids were, my kids were still younger when I was on that, that committee. I kind of looked at, you know, as a great opportunity, obviously, this is a wonderful thing. We have years six through 10. But did you discuss contingencies had we not gotten the grant funding? And specifically, you know, talking about having a SRO/JO, being an agent of environmental change. What were, what was your suggested plan had there not been funding for that position?
We knew that that would be something that the powers that be would be discussing. We didn't feel that was our place to really think about what would happen in that case. We obviously would have had to go back and look at our plans and perhaps adjust them.
So there was like no recommendation as to, I guess, what the impact would have been had we not continued that role in the middle school?
The coalition had, and I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on that, but we had, we did not have a contingency plan.
Okay. So it is obviously great news. I guess the other question I have is knowing that there is no year 11. Are there other grant funding opportunities that we can look at to expand this program? And what kind of areas would they cover that would kind of marry into the goal of the Safeguard Committee?
I know that we would not be able to apply for another federal grant. That's part of what happens when we get one of these grants. So when that time comes, we'll have to pursue and begin looking at, at other options. We'll have to look for, long before that time.
Just one of the requirements, too, for year seven, is we will need to submit a sustainability plan. So we'll have a year to really work with all the community partners to identify what that might look like.
Excellent, that really is, I guess, the crux of my question is, you know, it's a 10-year program, but what happens when there's no funding to kind of back up the plan? So what is sustainability? And that, you probably, you know, worded my question better than I should have, so, thanks.
Andy Schneider?
Yeah, just to address Shannon's question about contingency plans. So I'm, I've been the liaison from the school board for the last year and a half or so into Merrimack Safeguard. And while they're correct that we didn't have a formal contingency plan, I believe that all of us had in mind that if it didn't come through, we were going to work at this. And one of the major items was to say, what do we do about the SRO? Because I think from the school board perspective, we see in sp- the school board perspective, we see in spades the benefits that the SRO brings, not only, you know, at the high school from experience, but also especially at the middle school. So, I think that they were looking to me to potentially carry a torch back to the school board, should it not have had to start the discussion, so.
Yes. Chris Ortega?
I would add to what Mr. Schneider was saying, in that the fact that we've gotten this second grant is actually pretty amazing. It's rare. I think we're all thankful that we've gotten it, and that it wasn't likely to have come through, and that, in fact, this agenda topic, which was mapped out some months ago, before we knew what the actual outcome of that grant application process would be, would have been to have exactly that conversation. So, to the points that have been raised about contingency, and what will we do, I would hope that the two bodies, over the coming years, start to look at that and decide exactly what they want to see from Merrimack Safeguard. How do we want to continue to support and fund the efforts in this regard, whether it's the SRO, or broader community involvement, and/or broader community involvement, because we know it involves that. But as this starts to take even more shape through years seven through 10, hopefully by the time we get to year nine and 10, we know full well what we, as a community, are going to do, and how we're going to accomplish it.
Any other comments, questions? I would concur. Oh, Tom?
Thank you. I take this as only centered on the middle school. Is that, would that be an accurate assessment? I've got the middle school principal here. I've got the middle school SRO. And I've got a high school down the street. We've got a high school down the street, so.
So, the main reason I'm here, yes, it's middle school, but when I wrote the grant, I wasn't at the middle school. So, it's kind of a carryover. But I'm going to turn to Betsy, because I think she's the best one to answer where the focus is.
I think it's helpful that Detective Prentice's office is located within the middle school, because that's an incredibly vulnerable age group. But the plan going forward really involves so many partners, both from the K all the way up to 12th grade, from school nurses, guidance counselors. So, it really will impact students at all levels. Our SAD group has been connected with some of the work that we've done. So, we really, on purpose, broadened it beyond just the middle school level. And really, the action plan going forward, especially with Julie DeLuca's assistance, will make sure that we include the elementary and upper elementary as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll just finish by saying that I also concur that there have to be important conversations before the time comes, sooner than later. Let's not make this a last-minute, having to jump and make decisions. There's going to be a lively conversation on both sides, no doubt, but an important one. So, I would just recommend that we bring it up sooner, before we get into a crisis mode. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. The second item on the agenda. James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School Security, when used as a polling site. School Board to share security concerns regarding use of J-Muse during elections, while school is in session, and to share preliminary option for alternate entrance for voters. I have asked, you want to come up, Diane? Oh, you don't look it. Well, why don't we put it this way? We do have Lynn Christensen and Diane Trippett here. And the reason I asked them to be here is not to testify, but to be available if they had concerns during the discussion. So, is that okay with you guys? Okay. So, I'm going to turn it over.
Tom Tusa.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, perhaps what I can do, well, because I may ask Mr. Tusa to come up in a second. As folks know, we recently moved as a town from a multiple polling site town to a single polling site. And the district has provided for the November elections, the high school gymnasium for those elections, and has scheduled around that election to have a day off from school, such that the school can be fully available for the election. For the elections that occur in September and April, we continue to vote at James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, and school is in session. The school board has shared some concerns about opening the doors to the school during the day. We heard Mrs. Merchant earlier this evening testify to the situation. In a few minutes, I'll ask Mr. Tusa to come up and share some preliminary estimates that we've gotten. In order to make the exterior door at the APR of James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, a secure door such that that room could be standalone for the elections, in the event that this is something we want to proceed with. But I thought I'd share a letter Principal Emily Carter received from a parent, that I think sums up the board's concerns as well. And I hope you'll excuse me. I have a really bad cold, and so bear with me. I'm a little nasally. And this is from Ms. Amy Knight, who works at BAE Systems. Good morning, Emily. I hope your year is off to a great start. I hate to burden you with emails already, but I have a concern. I believe that today is primary voting for the town of Merrimack. I do realize the school, Upper Elementary, hosts elections every year. But I have a concern about what I witnessed as I dropped off my children this morning. When I pulled up at 6:30 to drop them off at the only available entrance, there were about 20 people setting up shop. People were going in and out of the facility with the children, as they entered to go to the before-school program. Because of the people sitting in the parking lot, it was already hard to get around them. I can't imagine how difficult it would be when the buses are dropping kids as well. However, traffic was not my biggest concern, although I see a huge safety issue there. My biggest concern was having people walk in and out of the building as the kids are entering as well. I don't mean to cause issues, but I have a background in law enforcement and counterintelligence. Additionally, I am a survivor of the worst case of child abuse history in my county. Therefore, I am the biggest child advocate and dedicated to keeping kids safe. While I understand the community needs, I think it is dangerous to allow access to the building just for voting. Our kids need to be safe, and that is our number-one concern. I think whoever decided to allow this was not thinking, and has a complacent attitude. Because nothing has ever happened, does it, does not mean it won't. How do we know that we are not allowing sex offenders, pedophiles, and people of other danger into the school? How do you know the men and women who walked in with my children today were upstanding citizens, and therefore safe? Do we assume, just because they are supporters of the community and local politicians, that we should trust them? Yes, there was an officer there. However, he was very busy moving barriers and chatting with the people about how to set things up. I don't blame him. As I have been in his position, it is very hard to multitask. I don't believe he even noticed the people who slipped in with my children. I know your school does well, and cares very deeply for each and every child under your care. The staff is wonderful, and I am very happy to have my children with you. I am not the person who causes trouble, as you know. However, I do feel as though I would be doing a great injustice if I did not speak up. This event would be the perfect opportunity for disaster. It really wouldn't be difficult, with all the commotion, for someone who was bad to slip through the cracks and cause harm to the kids and the staff. Additionally, we know and have seen how political agendas can cause heated and often dangerous events to transpire. Why are we taking the chance? On a typical day, I can only use one door to pick off, pick up, and drop off my children. There is someone posted there, and you have to sign in and sign out. So, why are we saying that because of political agenda, we should open our doors and put our kids at risk? That's very scary to me. So, I thought that summed up the concern pretty well. The board had asked Mr. Tusa, and Tom, if you're willing to come forward, to look at some options for the exterior door at the APR, to see if we could keep the main door locked and provide an ADA accessible entrance to the APR. Tom?
Thank you. My name is Tom Tusa. One thing I did find is when I was asked to come up with a couple of different numbers to provide an exterior entrance, secured entrance to Mastrocola Upper Elementary Schools APR, was to bring, there's two different ways of approaching it. One would be just a rough ramp with rails going up, going through the door. And let me describe the door. As you're entering the APR, going along the stage, and it would be the door exiting closest to the church, is the door that we picked to modify that entrance. The, without any design or anything like that, I just asked roughly, what would our cost be for a ramp, railings? Basic, bring us up to something that would work for us. And they told me, we received an estimate roughly from $45,000 to $50,000. Now, if we wanted to go the next step, and made a covered entrance, where we had all the items, such as sprinkler systems and all that in there, it could run as high as $115,000 to $125,000. Now, again, it's just an estimate, without any drawings, and really know which direction we're going to head in. But those are the two estimates that I received for that one entrance to improve it.
Thank you, Tom. So, we raised this issue because of the concerns. The town obviously sets the polling site, the council, as the providers of the polling site. We have some issues and concerns that we'd like addressed, and thought that it made sense for the two bodies to hear it, hear the estimate, hear the concerns, and try to figure out how to best move forward.
Tom?
Yeah. I don't, it is very important on security issue. And it isn't going to be, to do some alternate for that is not going to be cheap, quote-unquote, okay? You know, to put something in there that's reasonable, something that's going to meet the state requirements for access to a polling place, doesn't usually do that. I, you know, I have no, personally have no difficulty trying to address that issue. We're dealing with our franchise to vote here as one aspect of this, okay? And also, there's the counterbalancing issue of security in the school. I understand the concern about that. And, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us to try and work something out that benefits everybody involved, and how we approach this thing, understanding that we're looking at, you know, in the short term, a fair piece of change to accomplish that, and how we would work together to put something together that's going to be effective and useful. Thank you.
Any other? Finley Rothaus?
Thank you. I guess when I anticipated this, I thought we would use the two doors at the very end, the one door coming in that Tom's speaking to about fixing. But I kind of thought that we'd hack out the curb, make it a ramp right down to the street, and I couldn't have imagined $5,000 to do that. And so, I guess, I mean, when you get into the roof and everything, it can grow. I've seen it at the senior center, at the adult community center. It added up pretty quickly. But is it that we couldn't do that, or we were required to do other things, other than just the ramp down?
Just the ramp, the railings, making sure it's all ADA, replacing the doors themselves, making sure they're working right, make sure we have, when we come out, there's a good landing. That was the estimate that I received right off. Now, again, no one knows until you get drawings, because people hate to give you a price, just because that's not, oh, I thought we were going to get this, and we ended up with that. So, they didn't want to get pinned down too much for a rough idea without drawings. That's what I received.
Thank you. I was surprised. It was much bigger than I anticipated, for sure. Thank you, Tom.
Any other? Shannon?
Tom, I know that when you came to the board a few weeks ago, you talked about covered. This is an uncovered ramp that you're describing, correct?
Which one?
The one that you're describing tonight for $50,000.
Correct.
You're talking about covering, so that when you came to the board, probably four or five weeks, or four, five weeks ago, that it would actually be, kind of have a weather-resistant, you know, roofing and siding to it, or not siding.
Well, there is another option.
Tarping.
The option is that you could just get the ramp, which the estimate I received was $45,000 to $50,000.
$50,000.
And then, maybe we get like a top or a temporary thing. That would be an extra $500 to put over it. And that would be an event-driven type of activity. Every time we'd have an event, we'd have to hire a, like a tent company or something to come in and put a tent over it. So, that's another option, that we could just do the ramp with a tent company, or somebody coming in, putting a covering over it for each event. And that would be a recurring cost every time we had an event there.
Okay. Yeah, because I didn't hear the, I heard it weeks ago, but not tonight. So, but, and you were also talking about some permanent, I think, cover at our meeting, and that got into the 135, if I remember correctly. It's like in the hundreds.
It was the 115 to 125 range, of course, without any drawings and stuff like that.
Right.
That does get pricey.
And that's more of a permanent fixture that we wouldn't be using on a per-election basis?
That would be a permanent. That would be blending into the building, brick, you know, all fire codes and everything, every, all the bells.
Right. So, essentially, what we're saying is, as, you know, you've scaled it down to the most affordable level in your presentation tonight, but to have something that could be used regularly and not piecemealed, could go in, well, into six figures.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, Andy Schneider. Mine wasn't on.
Yeah, I was going to say. So, you know, I've been, this certainly has been a topic that's been brought up to the school board many times, and we've made some progress. I think the November elections at the high school, you know, where we canceled school that day, I think we're all comfortable with that. The size, the egress, it works pretty well. The secure entrance that we added to J-Muse really sort of created this, because Upper Elementary now has a secure entrance with all the security that we need. Unfortunately, the building that we've traditionally used for the 40-some years I've lived in this town is attached in a very inconvenient way to that area. So, I took a few minutes this weekend and drove around the Mastrocola complex, and said, we've got the option from Tom, but also if you look at the Smith Gym, the entrance, there is a straight shot entrance into the Smith Gym, where you can isolate both buildings to either side, and you've got bathrooms, and you've got a nice entranceway and stuff. That's one possibility. You've got the gym on the Mastro, in the Mastrocola Elementary, on the backside, which has its own entrance that's segmented from the rest of the school, closed doors. So, you could have an entranceway in that. They, whether they're ADA compliant, you know, that'd be like what Finley said, maybe not going to curb down, or something like that, could be done. But I think what it really calls out is that we, as joint bodies, need to sit down and do what-if. Look at the, look at the traffic issues, look at the flow. I think that we don't really want to cancel another day of school for the election in September, and the one that's in April. But we also want to create a secure environment, so we don't have to tinker with our secure entrance, and what we've really invested a lot of money in. So, I would be in support of sort of a joint, I don't like to use the word "task force," but a group to look at the options, to see what's there. Because I don't want us to back out of our commitment of the schools. I'd like to make it there, but are there better options?
Matt Chabana?
Hi. Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, like you usually do all the time. I'm trying to understand Mr. Rothaus's question, and I think I want to put it in a context. And Finley, you can tell me if I'm wrong. You're looking, you're thinking this, at this as a... You're looking, you're thinking this, at this as a straight shot from the threshold into the parking lot. Basically, that's your vision of the ramp.
I thought it was quite simple. I thought it was quite simple. And I, I mean, Andy's conversation, I'd rather... I don't want to, I wouldn't want the town to have to spend a lot of money on something like this because we already have access to all the buildings. They're all ADA compliant. And if we could come up with some better way, you know, Tom's mentioned, you know, I'm sure we need the button to open the doors to make that ADA compliant. The roof over the ramp, I don't know why we'd have to do that, or even the rails, quite honestly. But I don't know the rules of that, you know, in that regard. It just, it seems like overkill. And I understand, you know, it'd be nice to close the school and just, you know, let things happen at the high school, I always think is the best place. But I know that those conversations have gone on, and I just don't recall what they were for the reasons we couldn't, except too many days. But, but, yeah, I thought something simple.
Yeah. Well, when you're talking ADA compliance, you're talking a whole nother breed of animal. You do have to have the railings. You have to have a railing, I forget, is it forty, forty inches tall? And then you have to have another railing that comes in, a secondary railing around thirty-two inches tall. So somebody with a wheelchair and grab the bottom railing as opposed to the top. And the pitch basically has to be one and twelve. So you're talking one inch... Over twelve inches, you're talking a one-inch pitch. And that doorway coming out to the parking lot is more than one and twelve. And you can't have a one and twelve pitch ramp that's more than ten feet, twelve feet, before you have a platform.
Would be linked... The length of a ramp actually is about forty feet long, which is kind of surprising if you really think about it.
Because it doubles back.
So it's, the ramp would be about twenty, excuse me, forty feet long and about seven feet wide. And that's the entire scope of the ramp. And it just runs into a little bit more, especially when people are trying to put numbers to something they don't have any concrete things.
And I can appreciate that. I think what I was envisioning is the entrance that we currently use, I consider that kind of a ramp. It is the parking lot, but it's a ramp to me. There are no rails there. And they enter those doors, which, of course, I've never paid attention, but I'm sure they have the button so that they can automatically open. And I could be wrong, I don't know.
The new entrance is sure...
They do, okay.
Yes, it does.
And so, so for me, I thought coming off the parking lot where all of the candidates set up their displays and everything, I thought from there, going at that angle alongside the building into that entrance would be what we would do. And again, I see it as the parking lot. That, I consider that the same kind of ramp I would consider the other. So the rails and everything else, I, you know, I don't...
I'm not saying it's not, you know, it doesn't seem expensive, I just...
No, it is. It's obviously, forty-five to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
The ramp itself would be the forty-five to fifty.
Right.
And then, you know, obviously, if you want the covers and all, covering and stuff like that, you go out and sprinkling and stuff like that, it would, you know, significantly impact the price to it. I'm with you. It was a little bit more than I thought it would be, too. I agree.
In fact, it's kind of similar to the ramp we had done years ago when we had the TV studio. When I was looking at it myself, when I saw it was only like two feet off the ground, the grade, and that ramp, although it was made out of cement, cost us around thirty thousand dollars to do. And that was probably fourteen, fourteen years ago when we put on the 2000 edition. We put that ramp in there. And so even though it seems like it's an easy fix, there are strict ADA regulations you have to go by. And unfortunately, it inflates your costs to the point where it doesn't make common sense, but it still has to be ADA compliant.
Davis Powell?
Thank you. I like Andy's idea. I think this is a larger topic than what we can... There's much more information that needs to be gathered before we can come up with a decision either way. So I like Andy's idea, and I would like to make a motion that we create a non-task force, whatever word that is. How about a group? That we create a group that looks into either alternate voting sites or anything that can be done to the present voting site at the J-Muse to meet and come up with those alternatives to come back and bring to the board.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay. Did everyone get the motion? Well, let me just, interestingly enough, I was talking, I was caucusing with Chris here, and I was talking about exactly that. And I just have a little bit more specifics, if you'd be willing to amend your motion.
I apologize for stealing your thunder.
Oh, absolutely, no. I'm just...
I am willing to do that.
Okay, what I was going to suggest as a working group initially is Madge, Eileen Cabernal, a fire department rep, a police department rep. I'm not going to put you on the committee, Lynn Christensen, but certainly she's gonna have to be, unless you want to be. Because she has, any plans, she has to be able to bless in terms of the size. If you look at alternative sites, like the Smith Gym and Master Cola, you have to know what the size is, whether they have the capacity. And then the finance director, Madge and Eileen can decide whether you want them to be part of it or just have accessibility, whatever. How does that sound to you?
That sounds fine, and so amended.
Second approve of that? Okay, motion made by Davis Powell, seconded by Bill Boyd. Now, how many numbers do we actually have to have here?
Twelve.
Seven on our side, five, okay.
It's twelve. Twelve, Madam Chair.
So all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Dan Dwyer against, and Tom Koenig against.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Discussion was not had before the vote, and I think members of the board were slighted that discussion was not had prior to the vote being taken.
I apologize. No, it isn't, all right. Would you be willing to talk now?
Sure.
Please do.
Most of my comments are probably more slated towards the letter that was written out loud. I found that to be very offensive. We seem to be taking the safety of children and then throwing in the word pedophile as a red flag of the boogeyman entering our schools. The letter was filled with who's entering our schools? Who are these people? We don't know who they are. So I want to make sure that we clarify, because as someone who reads the newspaper every day, we know that teachers are pedophiles, coaches are pedophiles, lawyers, doctors, accountants, plumbers, electricians. Parents are pedophiles. So most pedophiles are parents and have their own children. So who, the question of the fear-mongering that I read out, that was read from that letter, I just found to be, now we're so scared that we have to do something to lock down our schools and make them prisons. And now we need to spend money and re-modify our school buildings where throughout history, throughout America, throughout Merrimack, throughout New Hampshire, our school buildings are the town's property, and we need to hell of elections. And now these elections are deemed as being inconvenient. I find the whole subject matter rather offensive. And pretending that our schools are under siege somehow, I find even more offensive. Thank you.
Again, I apologize for the feeling of being slighted. Lon Woods?
Yeah, my question goes to the motion. I voted for it, I'm not going to change that, I don't believe. But did I hear Mr. Powell suggesting that perhaps there would be sites other than the James Master Cola that would be considered?
I think what I did say that, but what I meant was that this group would be tasked with looking at the big picture to see if there are any other sites, whether... The Smith Gym was mentioned. You know, any other sites that might be more viable to holding the elections out.
Thank you, and I believe that that's what I understood, that in my mind, we were still within the bounds of that particular school site. Thank you.
Any other comments? Shannon?
I think, you know, what we were talking about, you know, we definitely need to talk about access points. We need to talk about, you know, voting traffic. We do need to talk about the security of our buildings. We've been, as a school board, very staunch and consistent that we wanted the voters and the students not to mingle. And I think the biggest problem that came with this year's vote a few weeks ago, that at the primaries, was that we were told one thing and another thing happened. Buses, when I did get there, I got there when the buses got there. So I got to watch what was happening. Buses were backing up in the road because the first access point where the students got off their buses was the same access point where the traffic was coming in to vote. So the goal was to have an access point further down into the building. So even if we do choose to make any of these changes, students should not be using the same doorways as voters. Period, end of sentence. Secondly, when we did have this event on primary day, when the students and the voters were coming in, the first thing the students ran into was a snack cart. So that meant you stopped the students as they were buying snacks. So now you're not getting them away from the voters. Again, a stopgap. These were things we were not told were going to happen. These happened without our knowledge. We were told the students would be coming in at what was called the Fish Bowl, which is a secondary entrance further down, which if anyone ever took their students to Jamie's before this year or before our secured entrances, that's where parent pickup always was, to give a point of reference. But the kids and the voters went in the same doorway, and then they were slowed down by a snack cart. And then, obviously, the plan was changed. So when I saw what was happening, I called the superintendent as well. And when I called the superintendent, I said, this is not what we talked about when the moderator came to our table, and we weren't comfortable with it. So actually, at the end of that school day, students were picked up at the Fish Bowl, which is the entrance to Jamie's, which is closer to the Master Cola Elementary backside of the building. So another thing that needs to happen with this plan is we need to know what's going to happen when voting actually occurs. Because what we thought was going to happen is exactly what didn't happen. And for us, that was alarming. So, you know, the voters, the voting system is a guest of our school for that day, but we still have a business to operate. And that business is educate students and keep them safe while doing it. And I don't think that we had the information we needed to do that effectively that morning. So on top of everything else, we need a communication plan for how this will be executed.
Thank you, Shannon. Andy?
Just a really quick comment. As most everybody knows, I grew up here. I went through school through most every one of these buildings back in the seventies, sixties. There were no, nobody locked doors. Nobody did anything like that. We played outside, there were no fences. I remember many times, though, when parents would come in and drag their kids out of school, whether it was either some sort of a custody thing or nothing, and the school could do nothing about it because we didn't have anything secure. As a school board member, given what's going on in this country, do I like it? No. But it's my responsibility as a member of the school board to look after the safety of kids so that when the parent drops the kid off at the end of the day, they know they're gonna be there, either when they pick them up or they're on the bus. That's what I have to do, that's what my charge is. And to think that Merrimack is the way it used to be and the whole world's the way it used to be, I can't believe that, even though I want to. And just so we know, while we're sitting here, the Nixle alert flashed on my phone saying there's a live burglary in progress in Merrimack where suspects are running through the town and the police is trying to get them. I applaud the police, but to think that we're a safe, keep your doors unlocked burg, it's just not true.
Cinda, did you want to say something?
I echo Andy's comments, and safety is a priority for this community. And the safety of our children is a priority. And I think it makes sense to look at what are the options that we have, what we can put forward, weighing pros and cons, and what we think through carefully as two bodies together. What I'm hearing is there are a number of citizens whom I think that have brought issues to our attention. They've come from here, there. I've heard it from neighbors. I've heard it in other places in the community that it's raising some flags. So the parent that wrote at Thornton's, I thank that parent. That parent, certainly, I'm sure, didn't mean to offend anyone, but whether to bring something to our attention. So I'm appreciative that we're going to be exploring this and looking into it further. I share those concerns. I share it as a school board member. I share it as a parent. My child is at that school as well. We are in a time in this world where we have to think through these things carefully. There was a student at Bedford hit by a car during the election, from what I read in the paper. So these are all things that we have to think about in our community and how we create safety around these events.
Anyone else? I'll finish off with a quick comment. I think it needs to be appreciated that this town council appreciates the security of our children as much as anyone else. I think there's also frustration from all of us, having to do with having our children have to live a different way than we did. And having to isolate them and having to do all the things. It's almost like we're giving in to what's going on. So that's certainly the difficult decisions that we have to make. But I want you to know that we appreciate that safety. I do have a quick question of Shannon. Were these complaints that you made followed up after the election? Let's see what we could do about it.
They were actually...
Do you know?
They were followed up during the election because the child pickup happened differently than child drop-off because of the call to the superintendent's office. Based on our understanding, that was going to happen that way in the first place.
But was there a follow-up discussion with the powers that be, whoever that might be, as to trying to address them before this meeting?
No.
Okay. Lynn, it looks like, excuse me, Lynn Christensen? Looks like you want to say a few words.
It's on? There's a couple of things I want to address. First of all, there was a comment made in the letter that was read regarding a police officer who was not addressing security of the children, and he was moving barricades. I want to disagree with that vehemently. The chief and I have talked very extensively about the security of the children in that school. There are three police officers there when there are children in the school. There's one at the entrance to the hallway beside the principal's office. There is one at the hallway right by the doors. There is no one that goes down those doors or those hallways that is not vetted by a police officer who is standing at that doorway. If they don't have a badge, if they're not a student, they don't go down those doorways unless they happen to be an election official with a pass, just like the kids that go to the bathroom. The officer that she saw moving barricades was the third officer that happened to be outside who was placing barricades to keep the campaign officials back from any voters who happened to be coming in or any parents or children who happened to be coming in. So he was, again, addressing the safety of the children. So I don't think that's an issue. The town was very careful to work with the middle school on a totally separate issue as far as how the middle school wanted to address the safety of the children coming and going. I don't know how the school dealt with the school board, but I know the town talked with the school and complied with everything that they requested, including additional personnel outside, including the flow of the students. including additional personnel outside, including the flow of the students. And however the school wanted to do it, the school complied with that. So those are the two issues that I heard come out tonight that I just wanted to address specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay. Everyone had their say? Okay. So I believe we'll leave it up to Marge and Eileen to set up the crew, initiate the discussions, see what we can do to improve. And the only thing I would recommend is, in the future, if there are major concerns, let's talk about them right after they happen. Why they happened, just exactly what you mentioned, but also talk about them soon after to be able to be resolved prior to the next occurrence. Okay? Thank you. Okay, and next on the agenda, town and school capital improvement plans. Town council and school board to share their respective CIP plans in order to coordinate in what years large-ticket items might appear as warrant articles on town meeting ballots. Well, I know that in the information that was sent out, there were two pieces of correspondence. One had to do with a capital improvement plan, capital expenditure summary form. And then there was a memo from acting town manager Paul McCally. And I'll speak to the town side, and anyone can, my side can jump in, and then you can do your side. Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, the memo from acting town manager Paul McCally. We do not have our CIP done yet. You guys are ahead of us. But currently, the town is looking into a warrant article for the highway garage replacement. We did have a meeting on September 11th, at which point we did vote to go forward with the highway garage on the ballot. We also have established, or are hoping to establish, we have some members, to initiate another, let's say, method by which we can inform and educate the public regarding it. Is that a reasonable summary? Everyone on my side?
Yeah, but I think I also brought up the point that we need to make a decision one way or the other by early January in order to comply with notifications. It didn't mean that we were absolutely locked into going into something, but that we had time to consider our options, to take a look at things. And when we get nearer to the time when we're required to hold public hearings in order to meet the requirements of the law for bond issues and deliberative sessions, that's when, that's when the ultimate decision will be made. We don't have our budget in front of us right now.
That's right.
And so it's sort of tough to sit here and talk about, you know, $3.2 million and how that might fit in. And also, we have to be cognizant of the fact that the legislature will reconvene in January. And that never means that there's going to be any largesse from the state to help us in any way. It usually means they're taking stuff back. So, you know, and just keep in mind that we're not, we are looking at it hard, and we think we're going to go ahead, but we haven't, from my perspective, haven't made a hard decision about whether we're going to go forward or not. And that probably won't be made until sometime in the budget process, which would be the third week of January.
Well, we have to have it done earlier than that, don't we?
No, third week of January would work out. We just need to do our public hearings, public hearings in February on that. But we'll have our CIP done early November.
Right. Okay, your turn.
So the school board has moved its capital improvement plan, and our process is slightly different than the town in that we have a planning and building committee which takes the capital improvement plan, moves it forward to the school board, and then, like the council, we then take ours forward to the planning board. And I think year over year, we've been getting some, a little bit of pressure from the planning board to see the capital improvement plan sooner rather than later so that they can take their actions. So we actually approved this at our meeting on September 15th. And I think the things of note in ours, while not going out into the future years, are the big-ticket items are related to the high school roof replacement, which is one of many roofs to be replaced, and at the same time, dealing with the air ventilation system, which those of you who fondly remember meeting with us in the cafeteria in the past probably have heard the sound of that, I think, forty-year-old piece of equipment that's up there and well past its useful life. We've decided to move the superintendent and special services consolidated office forward this year. And we have advancement on our technology infrastructure upgrade across the school buildings. Continued progress there. So the reason for bringing this item forward is really one of some level of planning board consideration, trying to recognize that if there are two warrant articles out there for new buildings for substantial amounts of money, that might be defeatist for both the council and the school board. And so we just wanted to make sure that we got information out as soon as possible so that folks were aware of both bodies intent.
And what do we do with that? I think, no, which was one of the reasons why, by the way, I brought it up on the agenda a couple of meetings ago, because I knew we had to discuss it and make a decision. And we did have the pressure of our own timetable to be able to make sure we had enough time to be able to submit it. And really, this, from my understanding was we had actually decided to go forward with it. That was my understanding. Is that correct? And that the committee, not that we couldn't change our mind because the committee would look into specific issues. Finley, did you raise your hand?
Actually, all I was going to say was the, if one of these two projects were put off, it would just delay for a year the impact on the tax rate. Because the one, of course, the first year of bonding is very low. Interest's only half-year, I think it is. And it's the second year when the impact happens. So if they, if one comes the following year, it really, it's going to be the big impact, no matter what. So it's, I don't know, it might be just perception from, you know, the public as to what they might perceive the impact to be. So, because eventually, they're going to be working together.
Yeah, thank you.
No, that's fine. I didn't see you. I'm glad he did.
Oh, okay. The thing is, you don't want to confuse the capital improvement plan with the spending plan. It's two different animals. Like Mr. Rothaus has said, you know, the first year's interest on a bond is relatively minor. And then the second year is when you usually get your highest year's payment, then it goes down from that depending upon what type of issue you take. I think what we should probably do is, I have a sheet, and I'm sure Paul does in his office, of all the bonded debt that we have and when certain issues are going to drop off the table. Like the middle school is going away in 2023, and we have other bond issues that are just leaving us that are probably $300,000 to $400,000 apiece. So maybe we can kind of like, you know, build a Lego set out of trying to feather these things in to kind of keep the tax rate as flat as possible. So I can, I have mine. I can share it with you so you could see all our bonded debt and everything all lined up. And it'll give us, it gives you the bigger picture of what's going on as far as how it impacts your budget and how it impacts your tax rate.
We have the same thing.
I know you. I know you do, Paul.
All right.
Of course you do. That's all I wanted to mention.
And that big one finishes when, 2000?
We have one that finishes in 2018 and one in 2023. And then we're done. That's it.
After that.
Na 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 na.
We have no other debt for that.
Sky's the limit, right, Paul?
That's right.
We only have two bonds outstanding, so.
Which was certainly one of our arguments for being able to justify the bond. Well, I guess, yes, Tom Kinnick?
So I'm seeing this list of things from the CIP from the school, and I'm curious, are you planning on bonding the full 300 and, or 3 million that's listed for next year? Or is there only, is there a bond even an issue in your future?
The building would be most definitely bonded as we put out two years ago when we put that forward. The roof and the ventilation system, if past practice holds with the board, operational maintenance costs are put into the operating budget. And so those would simply be a part of the budgeting process and not hit a warrant. Likewise, the technology infrastructure upgrade would also just be a budgetary concern.
So you're really talking about a one and a half million dollar potential bond for the superintendent's office?
Correct. And I agreed with everything that Finley said about the impact over time being simply principle and interest, and you would have those whether you put it off a year or two. I think he hit the nail on the head, however, when he said voters walking into a ballot booth with two major bond items on the warrant may perceive something very different than what the real and practical impact is to them year over year.
Okay. I guess I'm not considering that a one and a half million or a 3 million is really a major bond. I mean, eight, nine, 10, 12, something like that would be a major bond. We'd have a lot of, a lot of heartache over. But it's difficult to get a bond passed in this town regardless of how much it is. I understand that. But it still seems like four and a half million is a potential offering for this year. If we explain it correctly, I think the voters can understand that and work with it, especially considering the bonds that are coming off in the relatively near future.
Yes, Phil Boyd, and then Dan.
Thank you, ma'am, chair. Just a quick question to Chairman Ortega. When I sat on the school budget committee in 2010, I know we had had a budget item for the high school roof back then. What stage is the high school roof at right now, and how close are you to actually having it completed?
So I may defer to Business Administrator Chevanel because I didn't bring all of my-
I didn't bring my maps.
Yeah, I didn't bring my maps.
My map of the high school roof. You notice there is a big chunk there, but there's still probably that much left to go. There's, I forget what the number of sections Tom used as far as on the high school roof.
Yeah, my recollection is, so there's a number of sections on the high school roof. Almost every single one of them was out of warranty back when we were serving on the budget committee together. And a roof replacement plan has been put in place that actually carries us out even beyond the CIP that you see, and it extends beyond the high school. My understanding is that the high school, after the sections that have been designated here, there may be a few more sections, and then the high school will essentially be up to snuff for some years to come. But we also have acres and acres of roofs at the other buildings that are also needing to be replaced before they fail.
No, I understand. I understand.
It's about preventive replacement.
And could I?
Yeah.
You'd probably be seeing an expenditure in roofings around the 400 to 500, you know. The highest one is the one in 1920. It's the middle school for 1.2. But everything from there would go down. And then probably, shortly after that period, there'd be a gap of like no roofs 10 years because the roofs we're putting on right now have like a 35-year warranty. So Tom and I won't be seeing the replacement of those. Someone else will be dealing with that in this chair. So hopefully, yeah, exactly.
Excuse me, Dan, do I?
I just kind of got the feeling that after you heard all that, the school board's probably still a little gray on where we committed on that highway garage. So I just kind of wanted to give you a little bit more what I think, because someone who is on the committee. The council's kind of split on whether to go right back, right back to the ballot. So our way of getting around, getting to see if we could be together, was to form another committee. So I think in another couple of months, once that, once that new makeup of that committee, they're going to come back and give us a recommendation that, let's do it again or not. So I don't think we're going to postpone that question for you because if you're eager to be on the ballot with something, we would like to help get you the information whether we're going to do it or not. So I think in just another several weeks from now, we'll have a much better idea to tell you one way or the other, at least with a firm answer.
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for thinking that, Dan, because I was trying to think of how to say exactly that. Because that will, we're not ready. Things may change our mind in the future as a result of the committee.
It's not going to take us a long time.
Right.
We're going to get back to you in the hour.
Right. Shannon?
I actually had questions on your memo, and it's regarding the last sentence, honestly. It says, "In addition, there are $60,000 in the 2014-15 budget to review the fire department and to make recommendations on the current stations." I know that we had a south fire station voted a few years ago. Is that relating to revisiting that vote from, that didn't quite make it?
Paul McCally?
It's to review all our fire stations and to see what is needed and where they might be needed. Might be a rehab in south fire station. It might be a new building in the south fire station. It could be other things, too. We have, you know, we got an ambulance garage that sits out here. We have the Reed's Ferry Fire Station. So we have the central fire station. It's to review the fire department as a whole and make recommendations going forward. And right now, as the council, when they had their goal-setting priorities, the first priority was the highway garage. Second priority was fire. Third priority was Wasserman Park. So they're looking at all their capital and buildings in the capital and making their priorities and going forward. So it could possibly be that down the road, there could be a bond for south fire station, but it's not going to be on next year's ballot.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Tom, may I?
I think one of the things about when you see the $60,000 in the study, Paul alluded to it. There's been a significant change in the operations of the fire department as to the mix of the services that they provide. And one of the reasons for going out and trying to do this study is to take a look at how that, what that mix is and how that impacts our building needs, our staffing needs, and our equipment needs. We've been making some of those changes as we've gone along. We're down, what, a fire truck? That's gone. We're down one truck. We're down one ambulance, mainly because the chief and the department have come together to realign how they're operating and what they're doing. You know, when you're doing the high number of EMT calls that we're doing and the low numbers, not even double digits for structure fires in this town. You know, there's a, you know, we need to take a look at that and to see how this, how this is going to shake out and how it's going to fit in. So just that's, from my, again, my perspective, this background for you so you can see what's going on. We're constantly taking a look at these kinds of things. We've been doing it in almost all our departments. And now we're taking a look at the fire department because of those changes.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item. O'Gara Drive tennis court update. Just to do a really quick summary. There was an original agreement for an easement from the school in 1993 related to using federal funds to build tennis courts. Did that include the?
1993 was the MOU between the school and the town so that we can-
Regarding the easement?
Easement, right.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
Okay. And that was updated in 2001, which expires in 2018. On March 13th, Chris Ortega came to the town council with the purpose of, and I'll quote the minutes, "The board requested to make an inquiry of the town council relative to the plan for the ultimate repair or replacement of the tennis courts." Okay. As a result of that meeting, now also to add, we had the tennis courts inspected and an appraisal done, what would it take to repair or replace the tennis courts. And that information has been supplied to everyone. But just to summarize, remember, all of these was just a three-year warranty, which is a pivotal, important piece of information. It ranged in 2010 from $29,000 to $166,000, and that range had to do with repair versus replacement. And in 2012, that higher level had increased to $183,000. So the town council again met and, on March 13th. And basically, we came to three issues that we discussed. And if you saw the minutes, it was a rather lengthy discussion. We talked about whether we were going to repair or replace the tennis courts. And as a result of that, there was a motion saying we were not going to spend the money. We were going to look into alternative options. We also looked into the question of conversion. And that had to do with getting together with Dred and the state. And Paul, you can give more specifics as well. Related to, can we, in fact, have an alternative site for other recreational, but we would have to get permission from the federal government to do that? to get permission from the federal government to do that. And we have had some conversation with the state. And Paul, you can probably jump in.
Yes. Basically, the original tennis court and then the upgrade in the tennis courts was done with federal money. And what the conversion would do is that, since it was done with Parks and DRED and Parks and Rec, is the conversion would take some other item in town and make that recreation property. Instead of repairing the tennis courts, it would be, the town would have to do X, Y, Z for recreation, whether that be volleyball courts, or horseshoe pits, or walking trails, some kind of form of recreation. So we went to the state because the state was doing a review of all these federal projects. And the tennis court, the basketball court, and the skating rink were all part of these funds from the federal government. They came and they looked and they inspected it. They inspected our skating rink. We told them it's a mobile skating rink. They were okay with that. They looked at the basketball courts. They said, for the most part, the basketball courts are in very good shape. There's some cracks in there that need to be repaired. They looked at the tennis courts. They took pictures of the tennis courts. They are still in the process of writing up their write-up. The state had to go, the DRED and the Parks and Rec Division had to go throughout the state and review every one of these recreation projects throughout the state. They didn't do them for six years. So they had to go throughout the state and look at all these projects, make sure that, number one, they are still used for the intended use. And if not, what are the towns doing to offset that? I tried to contact the gentleman at the Parks and Rec Division. He was on vacation last week. He didn't get back to me today. We've had conversations, actually, Eileen has had conversations with him in the past, to start breaching the subject of conversion. And it looks very possible, but what he said to her is that these are items, and what they need to look at is what do we need to do? And they were supposed to get back to us to see what we needed to do and offer as a conversion, meaning the town, the town council, to offer as a conversion. And that's what we're waiting for, his recommendations, his feedback, his report, so to speak, of how the tennis courts are, what he feels if the tennis courts are repairable or not repairable, things of that sort. So we're in the process of holding for him right now.
So that's where we are.
You're welcome.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for the update. Do we have a sense, he came in May, it's now October, so it's about six months or so, five months since he was here. Is it another five or six months? Is it another year? When will we have a sense of what a conversion, excuse me, recommendation? Looks like I'm not getting emotional. I'm just ill.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Honestly, I think now that we're moving into fall and the winter months, they'll have some office time, so to speak, and probably within the next five or six months on the late end. I would hope that we'd get a report from them. We've had other conversations with some of them. They said, oh, yeah, we know, we've got to get back to you. It's just, they've got to get back in the office and write their reports up.
And they're busy touring all the sites that they had.
Before it starts to snow in the north country and things of that sort.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments? No? Okay. Next on the agenda item, Chestnut Hill Development, Old Blood Road, town council and school board to share their perspectives on this project and determine possible next steps. And you asked this to be put on, so I'll hand it over to you.
Sure. I'll go first. At our last meeting, for the first time, we actually heard from the developer and their site engineer on the plan for the Chestnut Hill development, which includes the connection of Old Blood Road into Madeline Bennett Drive, which, as you know, is the entrance way to the Merrimack Middle School. Preliminary plans that had been presented to the planning board and other groups were of some concern to the school board in that they had at that intersection a number of stop signs coming off Old Blood Road as well as coming down Madeline Bennett. And there were some concerns raised, both at the school board level, but also within administration, about busing routes and delays and traffic that might ensue. The good news is, at our last meeting, the engineer presented a revised plan that accounts for a rotary in that section where there's already a kind of a natural carve-out for a circle already to help keep the traffic flowing a little more smoothly, and as well, a queuing lane for buses off on the right-hand side of Madeline Bennett. So the update from the school board's perspective is that there's been some promising dialogue and development in terms of the plans there. We said we would deliberate on it. It's actually on our agenda for October twentieth, at which point we'll take some advice from both council as well as the school board. We'll discuss the plan as a whole, and we expect to have an opinion on the plans that were presented at that point. So generally speaking, positive developments of late as it goes from the engineers. So I don't know what the council's perspective has been on the project.
Do any of the members of the council have a perspective they'd like to share? Mr. Finley Roberts?
Thank you, Nancy. The involvement I've had is from the Highway Safety Committee's standpoint. The presentation that was made to us was apparently the previous layout, and there was a lot of concern by the school district in particular of the traffic flow. Madeline Bennett was going to come in and continue curving southerly into the new development. And the entrance to the middle school would have been cutting into Madeline Bennett at that point with a stop sign coming from the school. And there were their concerns, the district's concerns, I think were primary, well, safety all in all, but were the impact on the flow of the buses leaving the facility, because they'd have to stop, and it wouldn't be a smooth flow. And they were concerned about the downstream impact on the upper elementary school, as I recall. So now, I haven't seen this new revision. But I think if the school, the Highway Safety Committee, it was pretty much a split vote. I can't remember, it was four to three or something to that effect. And so this, if the school district's much more comfortable with it, it would be good all around, I'm sure. So that's about it.
That's about it. So we'll wait, and hopefully you'll be all happy with the new configuration. Excellent. Okay.
Ms. Herring?
I'm sorry.
Could I add?
Absolutely, Tom. Sorry, I didn't see.
This hasn't come before the planning board either, as a rotary. And so I'm concerned. I think there are a lot of issues that need to be very carefully considered there, not the least of which is the size of the rotary and how well it will fit in an environment where there's wetland on multiple sides. And to make it large enough for buses to be able to navigate and still be able to safely navigate everything else around, I'm concerned about how much wetland impact we're going to end up having. So again, I haven't seen it. I thought the plan before actually was fairly reasonable. When you consider the amount of traffic coming out of Chestnut Hill would be fairly light, buses wouldn't be stopped for long periods of time. A short delay at a stop sign is not going to impact a lot when you have a light at the end of the street, from what I can tell. But it certainly needs to be evaluated and understood. But I think we need to understand all the impacts, not just a school bus delay, but any other impacts that might happen to the environment as well.
It's my understanding, and again, I'm not driving the process, where I think from their perspective, we were one of many stops to governing bodies and committees and boards on their way back ultimately to the planning board. So I think the understanding is, what they're looking for is a check from the school board so that they can now take it back to, ultimately, to the planning board to address the concerns they just raised. That's my understanding, anyway.
If I could just elaborate just briefly.
Yes, ma'am.
Having been involved with Stephen Keach and Ken Clinton, who's the engineer for the developer, one of the main concerns, obviously, was the buses and the bus traffic, because in the afternoon, they all queue up around the middle school. And when they leave, they leave en masse, and they just go right through that, the circle, right there. And to have each one stop, that would be a delay. And then the site distances between Old Blood and Madeline Road, it takes around two-hundred-and-forty feet for a car to recognize another car coming in the opposite direction, react and stop. And when you had that T-intersection, you had the stop sign, and left-hand turns are notoriously dangerous, anyway, going into the school proper. So this seemed to solve those issues. Obviously, it'll be brought back through the formal channels. We're looking just in the end to perhaps craft a letter saying that we don't object to the design that was presented to the school board, and then it'll go back through the normal channels. It still has to go through DES. When looking at it right now, currently, it falls within the parameters of the existing circle there. So just as a layman, I'm not looking at too much of a wetland impact, although I'm probably a little bit more than a layman after all these years. But it's going to have to go forward through the various boards, and eventually, it's going to have to go through DES for their final blessing.
I was just curious if somebody might speak to the, it says, agenda item number five. It says Chestnut Hill Development, that's the Old Blood Road. It says Development and their attorney. Are we anticipating somebody to be here this evening, or was it?
On the twentieth, tonight? Oh, gosh, no.
It does have it.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just noticed it there.
It's listed, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It was listed.
Sorry, I have to.
No.
I see how this goes.
That originally had been put in there, so we're not sure what the original intent was. Any other comments or questions from anyone? Okay, moving on.
Perhaps they didn't expect to get a positive response from the school board when they made a presentation.
Perhaps. Okay, recycling update. Town council and school board to share respective progress in recycling efforts and determine possible next steps. Paul McCauley and Dr. Mark McLaughlin are here. I know that the town council has often encouraged the school to be a partner with us in trying to increase the use of recycling and perhaps integrating some recycling concepts in with whatever curriculum, whether it be science or whatever. So I guess this is just an opportunity for us to hear about, and one, encourage you again, but two, to also listen, to see what you've already done. So we are all ears.
Good evening. Just a quick background. From January of two thousand and twelve, so calendar year two thousand and twelve, to calendar year two thousand and thirteen, our single stream recycling went up about five percent, which is a good jump. We did a lot of changes in town. We smoothed out the swap shop. We put up signage and things of that sort. And the group, the little group that we put together, working group the town put together, was looking at some potential partnership with the school where we could send out some recycling newsletters and what actually can be recycled in single stream, and explain what single stream means, and some of the changes that have occurred at the transfer station to make single stream recycling more advantageous for people to move through the recycling building and things of that sort, you know. On Saturday, I think I had a long wait. It was two minutes, you know, to get through the building. So it isn't like the queuing that we used to have, five, ten, fifteen minutes when we had the swap shop there and other things. And we're looking to partner with the school and maybe give some information that can go out with the students home, because as we know, as the younger kids, the K-through, the K-through-seven kids get involved with it, and that will progress as they get older, and they'll do it. And it's something that a father and son, or a father and daughter can do, or a mother and daughter can do on a Saturday morning, or when they go to the transfer station, is something they could do together. And I know we had several questions in the last time we talked about, you know, what it, I know the school recycles, but what is the school doing with the recycling and things of that sort? And are you seeing a benefit to recycling?
Well, first of all, we thank the town for its invitation to partner on this, because it's a really important subject. And I think we're really pleased that we can find a common ground here. I think that's really, we're going to find some real fruit in that. Our efforts really are twofold. One is kind of in the community service mode, and that primarily relates to clubs at the high school, let's say. Student council interact with other clubs where the notion of community service and contributing to a healthy community are fundamental. And so the practical application of that is that they have established paper recycling places throughout the high school and intentional efforts to engage in that recycling. And so there's been a bit of public outreach about that, too, talking about how much, you know, how many trees are saved when a certain number of pounds of paper are recycled and so on. So that has, and so that outreach has really extended to students. And as was pointed out before, when students take that information and they take it to parents, that really has a big impact, because it's a dinner table conversation, and then that becomes something that becomes understood and lived in the day-to-day. So that happens right now, too. In each of our schools, there are classroom bins for recycling, and that's intentional to continue to support the idea. That's a good conversation prompter, just about being a good citizen. And that relates to the curriculum component of what we do, because in social studies curriculum, there are threads of the curriculum that talk about being a good citizen. And that means not just a local citizen, but a state citizen, and a national citizen, and a world citizen. And it relates to, you know, keeping your planet clean and safe and so on. And so there are links there, and clearly, there are links in science as well. So really, we have kind of a three-fold approach. One has to do, again, with the community service element, and then the other has to do with curriculum in those two areas particularly. So, and there are lots of initiatives in town. Our automotive, in the district, our automotive department at the high school recycles its metals. And they don't just do that without thinking. They know that these are usable parts, and that they know that there's a recycle bin for that metal, and that that metal's going to go to the proper place. And there's some study about what happens with those pieces of metal. Other items of furniture that can be separated, metal separated from wood, those go in their places, and the students are aware, largely aware by their instructors about that. So there are lots of different ways that I think that our students are engaging in that understanding and knowledge and sharing that. And anything that the town continues to want to do to partner, we are really excited about it, including the information that you were offering that would be distributed. I think that through the normal process that those kinds of things get reviewed. We're really happy to welcome that.
One of the things I was thinking of when you were speaking is, did you ever see the video that Rick Seymour did about the recycling? It's really a very well-done. Rick Seymour had a DPW, and I'm sure we can make it available through our...
We'll definitely get him a copy.
And it really brings in, it brings in a bag of trash. He literally goes to the transfer station, takes a bag of trash, and said, okay, if we took out anything that was recyclable, let's see what. And it went from a full bag to a really small bag. So to me, you know, kids, visually, that makes the impact. And it's not only the paper at school, and it's not only the water bottles that you use at school. It's what happens at home. And we are hoping the kids start annoying their parents, because they will do that, you know. Why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? And that, I think, is a really good visual cue for them, for their own memory. So I'd like you to encourage. It's an available resource. It's done by us. It's our transfer station, so maybe we can provide copies.
Maybe we'll get Rick up there to do an updated version.
Well, that was well- Well, that was well-done, though. It really made the point. It's home stuff, you know. Okay. Oh, oh, my goodness. Dan Dwyer, then, Bill?
I hate to give criticism again, but I'm going to. But the signs up there are still pitiful. Been on everybody for over a year. Bottles, glass, paper, all, there's so many different things that we could be doing more with signs and we haven't. So, shaking my finger at Paul McCauley on that one.
Bill Boyd?
Thank you. I, no, it's more, I guess more of a comment directly to Assistant Superintendent McGlaughlin, just to kind of put the bug in his ear. And I hate volunteering employees, but I just, I know we have Ian at the transfer station who has a certification in recycling. And I think with some of the kids at the high school that are taking an active role in recycling and we're looking to, you know, broaden their educational perspective, to me, there's, I think there's an opportunity there for maybe some mentoring there where the high school kids could reach out to Ian and talk about his experience, some of the training, education that he's gotten. And then along those same, same lines from, maybe from a curriculum standpoint, that the high school kids could take that experience and maybe work with the elementary school kids on, now you're talking more of a, creating a role model kind of scenario for the high school students. I mean, it's all up in the stratosphere, but I think it's something, at least in my mind, that we, we should consider, especially if we're trying to cre, increase the level of community involvement. If we're trying to drive our, our tipping fees and keeping them as low as possible, we need to be thinking a little bit more directed towards how we can do that. And I think the peer-to-peer relationship, I think, reaching out to somebody in town who actually works day-to-day and has the impact handling all of our, all of our recyclables at the transfer station. I think it magnifies the kids, what they do in the classroom. I think it magnifies tenfold when they actually see somebody actually working in the arena, doing something practical in that particular area. So, I would hope that you might cross that bridge and, and reach out at some particular point.
I think that's a, a really practical and excellent recommendation. And, and I'll talk to Paul and, and see if we can get Ian involved in some of our programs. And I, thank you. It's a good suggestion.
Lon Woods?
I suppose no one's too surprised that I might have something to say about recycling. A very good resource for you, Mark, would be Mark Dufour over at the Northeast Resource Recovery Association over in Chichester. They have a program that they target two schools for encouraging practical and curriculum involvement in recycling.
And the best part of that is it's low cost or no cost.
Finley, Raths?
Actually, a lot of the points I was going to make were covered. As Lon has just spoken to, I believe they are free, no cost, because when our discussions were evolved around the single stream, they said that they would make available all types of things as well as educational opportunities. I love Bill's idea of Ian, though. I think he would be a great person in there, whether or not he might be interested, I guess is another thing. But, but he's spectacular and he's very invested in it, coming up a couple of years ago with ideas to try and have a more efficient system so we would actually get higher payment for our recyclable product. At my wife's school where she works, they actually have a nationally-recognized recycling program where, I can't remember what company gave them the baler, but they're so amazing with their recycling ability that they have a baler to bail their own paper and cardboard and everything right at the school. But I think, I always feel badly because I always believed this is a great idea, you know, that the school could help in, you know, instilling these ideas in the young kids and everything, but I never follow through until the next meeting when I think about it again. So, shame on me. But I, I really, it is where if we can impact at the elementary school level, those are the kids who go home and...
That's right.
...the parents into submission. And, and lastly, I have to tell you that Dan Dwyer, who was not a participant in recycling, is now the brutal guy at his house picking through the garbage to take out recyclables and put them where they belong. So, it works.
Tom Mahan?
On that, on that note...
Because of the, of the single stream is what's made it so successful. If we didn't have the single stream, then this effort just would fall flat because you, it would be too difficult. People wouldn't participate. But because you can get rid of so much recyclable stuff, it's really what makes it exciting where the numbers can grow. Like you said, 5%. I really feel over a couple of years, we could grow it 15% more. I really do.
Agreed.
Yeah, just to follow up on comments from Finley and from Dan. What we found when we started working on this over years ago was that it was scaring the living daylights out of the waste management people, you know, not, and to use, not as a broad term, not as a company name, okay? The solid waste disposal business. And the more that, the, the fact that we were using effectively single stream recycling enabled us to negotiate a very decent renewal of our, for our tipping fees that have essentially flattened them out over the life of the contract to, you know, not to mention the bulldog approach the town manager takes to those kinds of negotiations. But there is an impact that goes further than just, you know, the recycling impact. There is an impact on what we, what we are charged to dispose of our stuff, if you will. And it's been a very positive thing for the community.
Anyone else? Yes, Sandy Schneider?
So, this is, it's under the term recycling, but it's not necessarily of the programs we talked about. To give you an idea of sort of the way we as the school board think about recycling in general is, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we're replacing all of the bleachers in the gym because the structure is just not sound anymore. So, we buy, you know, put money to that. We tried to make sure that the wood and the metal that's part of the bleachers gets reused or either, either reused in the schools or what we do, we, we try to sell to be able to offset the costs. So, we're trying to use just in our normal day-to-day recycling in addition to what the town does.
Thank you. Okay. I think we can move on to, I believe, the minutes.
Madam Chair, I would move the Merrimack School Board, Merrimack Town Council Joint Meeting, September 6, 2012, public session minutes with the following modifications.
We're ready, Bill.
Page one, line 44. Putt of water being a potential redding spot should be breeding. On page three, line 116, it's not private property sepsis, it was public-private partnerships, to the best of my recollection.
Gotcha.
Same page, line 138. It's not a memo of understand, it's a memo of understanding.
Gotcha.
Proceeding forward to page 10, line 455, cancel has two L's. And on page 12, line 563, I'll defer to my, my Catholic college grads in the audience. Is air-conditioned hyphenated?
No.
Okay.
No, two words.
Otherwise, I'm good.
Okay, I have a initial. I need a second.
Second.
Who said second for Shannon Barnes, a second? Okay, any other, yes?
I just wanted, somebody might want to check Julie Pierce's spelling of her last name. That might be correct, but I didn't think it was.
What page is that?
Page 1, line 42. It doesn't seem to be.
Will you check that?
Yeah, I'll check that.
I have one modification.
Yep.
Page seven, line 340. The school board chairman is not Ortega-Ortega.
Oh.
That's my rap name.
Actually, truth be told, Ortega-Ortega opened up for Duran-Duran.
That's all I had.
Yes, Mr. Powell?
The rapper threw me off. Oh, here we go. Page five, line 241 and line 247. Shannon and I do come up with the same idea every now and again, but I don't think we said the exact same thing within paragraphs of each other. I personally don't remember saying it. Do you, Shannon?
I did remember saying it.
Okay, so if we could delete line 241 and 242.
Okay. Any other changes?
No.
Okay, let's... Yes, I'm sorry, Tom.
Last year's minutes had a lot of corrections for titles being incorrect and, and here they are also incorrect. So, just as a general statement, instead of board member, it should be school board member and things of that nature. There's quite a few of those where the school is missing and it just talks about a board member. And there's a couple of times when it's a school board, Barnes or something like that, as opposed to a school board member, Barnes, throughout the, the minutes. There's actually so many of them that we'd be wasting our time to go through all of them. The only other thing I wanted to mention was on page seven, line 344. It talks about having a person with the time to coordinate of all activities. I'm guessing the of is extraneous and could be removed, just to coordinate all activities.
All activities, yeah.
Thank you.
A quick question. Who's, do these minutes, do we know?
So, yeah, since we had hosted the meeting last time, which was actually two years ago last year.
Right, 2012, yeah.
Sandy Swanson, the administrative assistant to the superintendent, will take the corrections.
I have one more.
Yes, Tom Mahan?
Page one, line 30. I believe pledge should be capitalized.
And Tom Koenig, if I'm understanding you correctly, you'd like it assured that whenever it has school board member, town council member, you'd like that checked throughout? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's, it just varies back and forth between school board member and board member and things of that nature.
So, one way or the other.
It ought to be consistent throughout. I really don't care which.
Okay, so it's just consistent use. Thank you.
There's apparently another one on here. Oh, yeah. Line 26, Eileen's last name spelt incorrectly. It should be A-N-L, A-N-A-L. E-L.
C-A-B, A-N-E-L.
Okay. Any other corrections? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes with corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any against? Any abstentions? You, two, three. That's 12. Thank you.
Yeah.
The exceptions would be Cinder, I'm sorry, abstentions. Cinder, Lon Woods, and Tom Mahan. Is that correct? We did a pretty good time there, Chris.
You win.
We made it back before. How long this would last. I won. Just because I gave money not to talk too much. Okay, comments from the press. Comments from the public. Don't run up here now. Comments from the council. I see none. Counsel from the school board. Comments from the school board. Saying none. I guess they all want to go out here for the game.
Move adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Tom Mahan, seconded. Who said that? Bill Boyd? All those in favor? I don't see any, any negatives, any abstentions. Okay, 12, zero, zero. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.